We have quorum now with Maria is a member of the committee, so as Chair Melvin Edwards. I want to thank everybody and not to waste anybody's time if we could get started. And I appreciate all of you being here, particularly my colleague. I know she's dealing with a lot with family and friends and as a result of tragic events in Puerto Rico. So appreciate her being here, but I appreciate all of you being here and your time. So either Tim or Pam.
Counselor, I'll take it just to, and again, Counselor Perez, just to give, you know, thoughts and prayers to everybody in Puerto Rico. It's certainly an awful time for them. But the purpose that we wanted to come together with the committee today is basically, we had a number of points that came up in the public meeting and we wanted to, we got back together after that meeting and analyzed each of those and we made some determinations relative to the plan as to how the plan could be modified to address some of the concerns that were expressed to us. I thought the public dialogue was very good at the public meeting. I thought some of the points that were made were legitimate points that deserved our consideration. And I think you'll see that as we give you the presentation today, that, you know, we were very thoughtful about, you know, how we could try to address those concerns in an appropriate way in the plan. So with that, I think that Jeff is presenting, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, I'll be presenting.
Jeff, I will hand it the baton off to you to do the short presentation that we have, just to give the counselors an update as to how we looked at modifying the plan.
I will do that as long, soon as I get the correct screen up here. Can everybody's, I have to make it larger, but can everybody see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Sorry, some technical difficulties here. I'm not at my usual desk. Try something else. Tim, you might back up if I can't get this to work right. Tim.
I believe this, I mean, for me, I can see it well enough.
Is it large enough?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
You're not playing, but that's fine.
Okay. So. Okay, so as Tim mentioned, we wanted to go over today, the feedback we heard from the public hearing and some of the adjustments we've made to the plan as a result of that feedback. And then open it up for questions and comments and then just remind everybody of the next steps in the process. So I'm sorry, I'm a little discombobulated here because my multiple screens. So Tim Brangle is, is it full screen for you guys?
Yeah, I could see it.
No, it's not full screen.
We can see it, but.
No, no.
There you go.
Now we can see it. Can you hit slideshow though?
Yeah, hit the show.
Well, I did, but it put it on another screen. That's why I have to do it back up here. All right.
That works.
That's pretty, pretty large. So at the public hearing, we heard comments about some of the parcels that were proposed for acquisition relative to parcels that were currently home to locally owned businesses and but were also being proposed for potential acquisition at some point in the future. So we took another look at that. We also took a look at the timeline and the review, maybe a periodic review period so that the redevelopment authority with public participation or at least public, a public meeting would be involved with the review of the plan periodically and updates made periodically as advancements were made in some of the areas proposed for redevelopment and reinvestment. So that adjustments could be made periodically in what we're approving this year. If the need to invest in certain areas or acquire certain properties no longer needs to occur, then that periodic update can make those adjustments. Another comment that we heard was on specifically on two properties that we were told had historic value and just so as a recap of any of the parcels that were proposed for acquisition by the redevelopment authority. If they included a building that was over 100 years old, we proposed rehabilitation of that building to, to preserve the historic character and feel of the, of the downtown area. There were two additional parcels recommended for rehabilitation versus demolition should, should the redevelopment authority acquire those two parcels? So we did make that change. So the parcels are still in there, but the buildings on them are now posed for rehabilitation instead of demolition in response to the comment about the historic value of those. Timeline that I still talked about, and there was also some discussion about this plan really needs to make sure we support local businesses, local residents. Make sure that improvements that are made in the area are for the benefit of all, including people that have been there for a while or live in the downtown area or Springfield residents that want to move into the downtown area, either to live or bring their business downtown. So first I'm going to start with acquisitions. It's typically one of the most controversial parts of our number renewal plan. And as you may recall, a number of parcels were proposed for acquisition by the redevelopment authority. If it was needed to facilitate economic investment in an area or in a parcel that was vacant or certainly underperforming economically. And a lot of those acquisitions were that are in the amendment 12 that where we are reviewing. A lot of those acquisitions were in the northeast downtown district area. And that's where we heard most of the concerns and comments about. So after the public eating, meeting, as Tim mentioned, there was some, some regrouping and the thought was that the primary purpose of this plan is to focus on those parcels that are vacant or significantly underutilized. And to remove from the potential acquisition list, those parcels that are have an active business on them and the active business owner also owns the parcel. So if it's a local business, it's locally owned, parcels also locally owned by that business, they would come off the acquisition the, the proposed acquisition list. And as a result of doing that analysis, 24 parcels were removed from the acquisition list to respond to that, this concern about making sure that local businesses are enabled to, to continue on as they wish. Certainly if they want to be part of the redevelopment, we're happy to see them do that. But they wouldn't have the potential through this amendment to be acquired to, to make that happen.
Jeff, just to put a percentage around that, that's, that's north of 20% of the total number of parcels, correct?
That were removed.
Yes.
Yeah, well, well, north. Well, actually, if you include downtown area, it's probably a little higher than 20%.
Yeah, it's around 25%.
Yeah.
Looks like a quarter.
Yes, I like that.
Is it appropriate to ask the question regarding that part of it and specifically the impact of this proposed change on the overall, the overall plan and I mean.
Absolutely.
In this next, next two slides, I think we'll start to address that. So the map on the left was the map that was previously in the plan and you can see in the northeast district circled in red, the number of beige colored parcels. Those were parcels proposed for acquisition in amendment 12. The mustard colored parcels had already been approved for acquisition in prior amendments. So the beige was what was originally in the plan when we went for the public hearing. What's on the right is a, is the revised plan and you can see a lot less beige and I'm going to zoom in on that. So this zooms in on that northeast district. And these red circles indicate areas where parcels had been colored beige before because they were proposed for acquisition. And right now they're white, which means they are no longer proposed for acquisition. And as a, as part of looking at this, we did look at what will this, how will this impact the proposed redevelopment of the northeast district of downtown? And we felt comfortable with this change because what is still on here are the parcels that were already identified as priority parcels. And those are vacant parcels, parcels with vacant buildings, large parking lots that really aren't utilized for anything. And those are the ones that the redevelopment authority would like to focus on to begin with anyway, because they are the most blighting influence on the neighborhood, these vacant buildings, vacant parcels, unmaintained areas. So we felt comfortable taking off the ones that were beige and making them white now because again, there are businesses on them. They maintain their property, they're active businesses. And there were higher priorities to, to start with in this neighborhood to really make a difference. Tim, I'll let you chime in on that if you want to add more.
Yeah, I just wanted to take, make the point though, that this is just taking those properties off of the to be acquired list. Ultimately, all of the properties remain in the plan area. So redevelopment activity that's happening on those sites, should it happen, ultimately need to abide by the plan.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, this was just for the acquisition portion of the plan. And then just very quickly, a couple of the other edits that were made to the plan is was previously proposed, the timeline for the Court Square Urbanal Plan was going to be extended to 2050. Some people thought that was too long. So that's been revised to be 15 years from the date the plan is approved by the state. It's the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So that's quite a, quite a difference in timeline there. If it's approved later this year or, you know, with the worst early 2023, that would extend this plan to 2038. Also, there was a additional language that's been added in to point out that the plan will be reviewed at a minimum every five years and adjustments made made as necessary to reflect recent investments in the area or any other conditions that may have occurred in the area, but it was mainly brought up because if investment occurs in certain areas, certain acquisitions may no longer need to be in the plan. So that's why, that was the initiation of this five-year review, but we want to make it even broader and that it would be a five-year review to revise any actions if new ones are needed or previously identified actions are no longer necessary. And then the last thing was there was language in there that talked about the emphasis on local business ownership, market rate housing, affordability of living and, and doing business in the area. And that language has been strengthened based on some of the comments at the public hearing. I'm not sure everybody understood that that was a significant part of the plan. So it always was, but language has been strengthened to make that point that all those characteristics are part of the plan and what the goal is for the larger course for urban renewal area.
Jeff, if I may take a minute just to go back over some of those points and
Certainly.
emphasize certain aspects so that the counselors understand the purpose of it. So on the first point, I want to indicate that we have opened to us the option if after 15 years, we feel that there's a need to extend the plan. We would then need to come back and get the legislative approval from the council to do so. So and I think that's appropriate so that, you know, we have a 15-year window to operate. If we accomplish everything in 15 years, that's great. But if we don't, then we, we were obligated to come back to you and extend the plan and then get approval from the state to extend the plan as well. The five-year review, I also think, you know, is, is appropriate so that the legislative body is, is informed as to, okay, well, how is this whole redevelopment effort going with regards to the plan? And are we actually seeing the results that we, we want to see? And if not, you know, what, what corrective action should we be taking? And those are the two points I wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Tim. I'm going to skip the next one quickly and then come back to it. But just to remind people of where we go from here. We're here to review the, the updates of the plan with your committee. And then this plan needs to go to the full council for final review and vote. And assuming that's a vote in the affirmative, then the plan would take one last step with the redevelopment authority to give their final approval. So it can then be submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for state approval. And while the state's going through that approval process, we would then prepare what's called an expanded environmental notification form, which is just another box we have to, an urban renewal plan needs to check to go through another state permitting process through the MIPA office. It's really not a, this doesn't change anything in the plan. It just is another public review process at the state level versus at the local level. So with that, happy to answer any questions, hear any comments you may have.
Oh, well, I'll, I'll start very quickly, but by saying I appreciate your effort and work put into it and it looks as thoughtful and well-prepared as the original plan. And I hope that those who had raised concerns will be satisfied. So Counselor Perez.
Yes, I have a question. Based on the five-year review and just for the purpose of looking at the five-year review, there's availability to make some addendum if it's needed or once it's voted in. We cannot come back for any addendum to within the five-year review.
Well, the five-year review is exactly that, counselor. It gives us the opportunity to, to make modifications if needed. And then, you know, we would have to, if we ultimately did make modifications, let's say we, we determine that there was a property that we wanted to, to add to the list of to be acquired. We would then have to go through that approval process in order to modify the plan. And it would determine whether whatever action we were taking was this is a substantial amendment to the plan or a minor modification. And the state usually makes those determinations. Adding property to a plan is usually considered a substantial modification to the plan. So we would have to follow that process.
And I was asking, I was asking the question because if we are to vote as city counselor, we are voting the 15-year plan. And then that clause should be clarified at the time of voting.
Yes, you are voting for a 15-year plan that has been reduced from what we were planning on. How many years was it, Jeff? I, I know it went out to 2050.
Yeah, it was, oh, you know, it was adding 20 years to the current expiration date, which is 2030. So basically would have been another 28 years. And I just, I think to add, at any point, the plan can be amended. It's not just at the five-year point or not just at the 15-year point. If adjustments need to be made at any point, the plan can be amended. So we're not locked into any particular timeframe for amendments. And again, as Tim mentioned, some of them are minor amendments and the state determines that. And the redevelopment authority would be notified and approve it. And others are major amendments, which would have to go through a public process, just as we went through for this major amendment.
Thank you for the clarification.
I think it's important to add to the underlying premise of this is that the SRA helped facilitate economic development. And that may mean a signature parcel or development that helps spur development elsewhere. So the hope is that the market does respond, you know, that, that, that it doesn't necessarily require the SRA to do that. But sometimes you need a jumpstart as you've seen over the history of this plan, which has some pretty good successes, I think, in bringing some significant development to downtown. And so we want to continue that and hope that that pushes the market, the private market to respond. So that allows that five-year review. If the markets respond, we could take some of those parcels off that where there's been significant development.
Counselor Edwards, do you want us to, just to review the highlights of the changes for Counselor Allen that I think just joined?
Sure. Yes, that'd be, I'm sure he'd appreciate it, but we can't hear him. He's muted.
No, I'm, um, thank you, Tim. I've been on for about 10 minutes. I didn't just get on. So I got on about 10 after. I heard most of it. I do have a question or two. So the one, the, the urban re, I I assume we're operating under our current urban renewal plan.
Yes, this is the, the 12th amendment to the Court Square Urban Renewal Plan. So that, that's the underlying plan that we're operating with.
And has that been? I'm trying to figure out if I've been involved in reviewing one of these things before. Was, was it 2010 or something that the last review of this took place?
You probably would have reviewed it associated with Union Station the last time.
All right.
I think the last major amendment was around 20, uh, 2006, 2008.
Which is before any of us on this call counselors or on the council. The only person currently on the council might have been on that is, is catering. Melvin and I came on in 2010. So I, I was just trying to figure out, had we been through this before? So what is this? My question is macro. What is the? What is this going to allow us to do? One, I assume we'll prove this eventually, if not sooner. What does it allow us to do that currently we aren't able to do? And, and what does it give us possibilities to do that we don't have now?
So a couple of issues associated with that. One, and Jeff, you clearly fill in after I'm finished. But one, one of the issues is that it, it puts forward an underlying sense of what the community is looking for within the targeted geography. And I think that's, that, giving that level of clarity to the private investment and development market gives, uh, gives them an understanding of this is what the city wants in terms of development within this area, and it's clearly understandable. It also gives us, it, it positions as well with regards to obtaining resources to actually implement the plan with regards to governmental resources because the area has been deemed as an urban renewal plan area. Therefore, it's indicating that the area has underlying challenges in terms of its, its resources and investment activity. And I think the, the third piece is that it gives us a sense of being able to go to the market with an understanding that the SRA would have the ability, if needed, to actually get a development to an adequate unit of, of, of development property to actually implement a desired development in the plan area. Jeff, you can certainly fill in beyond that.
I think you covered it about just a couple of quick things to make, to, to put an emphasis on them. One is we've brought in appropriate recommendations from two plans that were prepared for the city in 2021. So it is providing a tool to implement some of the recommendations that were in the master development plan for downtown as well as the northeast downtown district plan. So it's building upon those recommendations. And, and I think the points have been made and then there's a major boundary expansion to include the former, I mean, the blast zone area, which is the northeast downtown district. So it's, it's a major expansion in that area, which certainly needs some help.
So that blast zone area was not in previous urban renewal plan?
Correct.
That's physically, physically that area wasn't it? I got you. So let's, let's assume that this.
But just to double down on that point, Counselor Allen, the, the plan area, if you could go back to the map, Jeff, that shows the difference, I guess, in terms of what's in, what's out.
Again, you have to tell me what you're seeing.
I got questions and comments.
Thank you. I just need to get my cursor on that screen. What seems to be my challenge today? Tim, do you have it handy? Can you share?
I do. Uh, I'm not sure. I need to be added.
We get out. I apologize.
Just go back to the map, Tim. So the, the area, Counselor Allen, that, that's shaded as the darker color tan. Those, those parcels were previously in the, no, the darker color, Tim.
Sorry, yeah, the, the.
No, going up towards Liberty Street. Those parcels were previously in the previous plan. And they came in under the Union Station Amendment. So obviously, as we were looking to do this amendment, the question became, okay, well, we had an underlying plan for the blast zone that was done, a master plan for that whole area. It, it just seemed logical at that point, given the close proximity to ultimately bring that area into the plan as well. So it wasn't kind of that there wasn't a, you know, there wasn't connection to land area that was in the previous plan because there clearly was.
Yeah, I, I would add to that too. I think you also want to leverage the investment that's happened there. And I think Union Station is a big win in terms of, you know, re-establishing Union Station transit. And, and the notion of transit oriented development is part of the northeast downtown plan. I think this area is right for that, given its proximity. So part of this is to, to is to build on, I think the successes of the urban renewal in the past to help leverage, you know, to bring it to areas in need.
Okay. To any developer that were to approach us or any current landowner in there, whatever. People that are already in Springfield. This shows them, this is the, the long-term vision for, for, you know, the 15-year vision for what we expect or what we're looking for in these different areas. Is that a, is that a reasonable way of saying it?
That's, that, that is a very reasonable way of saying it.
Right. So now somebody comes along and is interested in a parcel. From a financing standpoint, are they, are we looking at, are they looking at private development primarily? Or exclusively? Or are there circumstances in which public money might be available?
So assuming that a developer is interested in advancing a component of the plan in terms of what the plan's looking for, there, there is potential for incentives to facilitate that. But obviously, counselor, you know, our resources are pretty limited to just, you know, looking at providing gap financing.
I'll add, based on experience and some other urban renewal plans, you know, sometimes the public sector is able to step in and kind of indirectly help with the financing of a project by doing utility upgrades to increase services to a building because what's being proposed for redevelopment, the existing utilities can't support.
We look at is infrastructure. I mean, there, this whole plan has got significant investments in public infrastructure and open space. We look at is infrastructure. I mean, there, this whole plan has got significant investments in public infrastructure and open space. Quite frankly, one of the objectives of the open space uh, associated with this plan is actually to drive new investment into the area and kind of diminish that, that perspective that the area is blighted.
And sometimes the public sector has the ability to step in if, if there's some contamination on a site or in a building. And this, many times there is funding available to help with an environmental cleanup, so again, that could be a public action that would help reduce the amount of money in the, from the private side that would be needed to, uh, redevelop the parcel. So sometimes it's not direct financing or gap financing, it's other actions the public entity can take that then comes off the plate of the, of the re-developer. So assuming everybody's in agreement that it's an appropriate development project.
Well, pre-development to improve viability, right?
To put it in a nutshell, yes.
Well, that statement redevelopment should improve viability?
Pre- pre-development task where the city can actually step in, whether it's infrastructure or as Jeff alluded to environmental, do some of those pre-development tasks that hopefully improve the viability for the end user, for the developers. So those are things that cities can do, can help with the SRA in particular. Um, to help kind of, as Jeff, it takes the most things off the plane uh, of the development.
Okay, that's a good, good comment. Uh, thank you. Um, one other question, uh, a little different. Is, you know, Tim, we, we, the city of Springfield, I don't know, spent three million dollars or something on some parcels on Main Street. Um, I think with the, with the hope that we will control those parcels enough that the development that ultimately goes in there, we would have a say in it or something. Is that a fair way of putting that in? Is that, how does that purchase? Is it assisted by this, or is it perfected by this, or whatever?
Two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was the acquisition price. Um, I, I, and yes, ultimately, uh, the intent was to actually have the city have control of those parcels, um, which were developing an RFP process for, uh, solicitation of development proposals of the private sector. Um, and clearly, you know, we're going to have uh, direct involvement in what, what development is going to be happening with those parcels. Um, from the SRA and the city's perspective, um. I, I think that answers your question.
I think it does. Um.
The other, the other issue that I might add is, you know, one of the discussions that we've been having is that, um, the ground floor retail is critically important, or, or ground floor activated space is critically important in that particular, in those particular buildings. And, um, it's kind of, it, that, that component is somewhat of a lost leader from the private development market, and, you know, w- w- one of the thought processes that we had in terms of helping to, to facilitate development is that, you know, that space might re- remain, um, controlled by the, the public entity.
Okay. All right, um, I'm just thinking of, and I have one other project in mind I'm going to ask about. That being one, that, that's fine for now. I get that, Tim. Uh, when, when will that RFP, you know, roughly, when will that go out?
Um, I, 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 I talked with, uh, Tim Brandle just about every other day about that, Tim.
Yeah, yes.
But he's, uh, he's in draft form right now. We're getting toward, working towards finalization. And there's another component that I must admit that I, I kind of threw into play at the last moment. Um, because I think that the, the visual nature of having an understanding of, you know, the city, the area, and then the buildings themselves. Uh, we, we brought Focus Springfield, uh, into, um, uh, the mix to actually do a, 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 like a video, uh, um, launch of this, so that, you know, the development community can actually visualize as opposed to just having it be eight to ten pages worth of narrative.
Yep, that's great. Are those buildings like the first three on Main Street when you come around the corner from State?
If you can, my cursor's on one. Right at State and Main, yeah, one thirteen State, this is eleven fifty-five Main, which is Colonial, Colonial Building. And then it's eleven to twenty-one Stockbridge, this little building here, so. They are not on the acquisition list because they were actually acquired under Amendment eleven. But, uh, yes, councillor, uh, they're, they're all right here.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm looking at your thing, I'm looking on my phone. So, um, are they contiguous? I guess is my question is.
Um, no, actually.
The, the old, uh, the old Levine space, um, where the clothing store used to be.
Yeah.
Um, is, is, uh, on the corner of Stockbridge and, uh, Main, and that separates them.
Okay, thank you. All right, one other question. Sorry, Mr. Chair, if I'm going on too long here, but is that all right?
Sure, certainly.
Um. Damn, I was aware of this. I, I took a walk down Main Street last week. And you know what questions coming, Tim? Um, as I walked down Main Street, I would, I would happen to have some time downtown before an event. And I decided to walk Main Street, and I came upon the area right past Ford Street, which will be the Hotel Massa Soiet or the Paramount area and stuff. That's a project that has been on the, on paper, on the books or whatever for a while. But I don't believe and it, it has, anything has happened with it. Uh, why, and I'm probably not straight when, right, when I say that. I know, Tim, you said there was a nuanced difference there about the theater versus the hotel and things. Does this re- urban renewal plan do anything to make things go faster, to make things go easier? It was frustrating for me to walk down Main Street to see storefront after storefront, not just empty, but kind of cruddy when you looked inside. And in the middle of it, oh, it was the Indian Restaurant, which is like a shining beacon of development. And I, I believe it's still open and doing, I don't know how well it's doing, but, um, right around it's just cruddy. And, um, does this urban renewal plan help us at all with projects like that?
Well, it certainly gives you design standards so that folks that are occupying that space ultimately have to uh, uh, abide by the design guidelines associated with the plan. Um, I, I do think, however, eh, and I would welcome, you know, more council participation on, um, discussions around the, the whole Paramount, um, project, and, you know, how um, the city should be advancing with that.
I'm happy to have those. Spend a little time on that, Tim.
Because as I indicated, I mean, there, there's a pretty substantial investment on the part of the city with that particular project. And I think we all need to be comfortable that we're getting, that we're assured that our investment, which is in the form of a loan, is ultimately going to be repaid.
Has that investment been given already, or is that a commitment, or is it something we've already paid?
It's part of the structure. The council approved, um, an application for a section one oh eight to be filed with HUD. Um, uh, and, um, that, that, uh, got approved but never got, um, closed on by HUD. Um, because the project just wasn't ready to proceed. Um, but as the, the projects uh, changing in nature in terms of ownership, um, or prospective ownership, um, I think, you know, it's, it's a reasonable time to revisit the, the, the project and the, the city's, you know, uh, potential commitments associated with it.
Uh, thank you for your answer. Um, I'm not on this committee officially. I attend e- every committee meeting I can that fits. Uh, happy to attend this, uh, Councillor Edwards, I believe you're chair here. I might suggest that a meeting be held in the near term about that development.
Okay. Uh, um, in response to that statement, I'm happy to do so. Uh, I echo my colleague's concerns about the area. Um, Punjabi's food is excellent, uh, regardless of the building's, uh, locale. Um, and, um, would be happy to have a meeting regarding the area, uh, the Paramount Theater and its development in that time. Um, we do not have quorum, so we will not have a vote of commendation to the committee as a whole. Uh, Councillor Perez had to leave, so, um, and Councillor Allen, we, we appreciate his attendance, is not a voting member of the committee. Um, I only had one question, which was, um, kind of offshoot of what I think Councillor Allen was talking about. Is any of this property considered in a tax haven or opportunity zone, or one of those urban, you know, zones that can help facilitate investment? Or incentivize investment?
Yes, some of the area is in the opportunity zone.
Okay, um. Are, I guess, as Councillor Allen, you have any other questions?
No, I, I appreciate it, uh, Mr. Chair. I'm all set for now. Thank you. Good job, good, good job on the plan, everybody that worked on it. Thank you.
I just wanted to, uh, eh, give some, uh, uh, insight. We did a, an additional meeting with the business owners. Um, there is, you know, eh, eh, like with every urban renewal plan, there is an impact in terms of the, the properties that are within a plan area having some type of, uh, constraints put upon them. And also, you know, when somebody's looking to invest in a property, if they are on a to-be-acquired list, that potentially raises a level of concern um, associated with prospective buyers as well. That, that, uh, was brought back to us again, um, by some of the property owners, um, that were on the list as to be acquired. Um, but I do want to indicate that, um, the to-be-acquired properties that we currently have have seen little to no investment for a protracted period in time, and I, I just don't see that there's, there's a, a, an intent to move those properties in a a position that they become more contributing to the district, uh, without the, the governance of the plan. So you will hear more about that from some of the property owners that are remaining on the list.
Uh, and I would not expect that, um, hmm, that we would have a, or have a need for, or have an expectation of a unanimous vote in support of this project, uh, this project going forward. Um, and I, I understand that if your expectation is to completely satisfy everybody impacted, then that's a fallacy from the start or incident. Um, um, you know, somebody's always going to not be happy about it uh, or not want to change. Um, it's like trying to get a order, telling a hoarder he needs to clean his room. Um, it just doesn't work that way. Um, count the votes, as long as you've got enough votes passed, and then, um, I think that's, you know, in a majority way, the system is set up for the majority to to rule in on these issues, and that's the best we can hope for. Uh, the intentions is not to individually hurt or cause harm or perceive harm to anyone. It's for the benefit of the entire city, and not just the downtown, but the benefit to the entire, uh, city, yes, Springfield, so. Um, Tim, no more questions. Um, and if, as such, uh, it's always nice to be on a call with all, uh, Amanda and Tim and our new guests, and particularly my, uh, my favorite city attorney, Thomas Moore, uh, which I never see enough of anymore. Um, but thank you very much for your time. God, is that pretty face?
Councillor Edwards, if I, if I might, uh, I just wanted to ask, eh, 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 I certainly don't want to rush the committee. Um, do you feel that there's a need for us to come back again on the urban renewal plan before it moves up to council?
I didn't think we needed to do this, but, um, personally, honestly, um, but to be, uh, you know, for purposes of process, yeah, this was a very appropriate thing to do. Um, the probably the thing that's most disappointing me personally is the same people who voted or would have implied that they weren't in favor of it raised the questions, then none of them are here. So whatever you've done today, you now have to, uh, which is one of the reasons why I'm not a fan, uh, I mean, you know, Tim, I, I applaud Tim, uh, Councillor Allen, because he goes to so many committee meetings, listens to these great presentations, and then goes to committee hall and has to listen to the same, uh, presentation again. Um, so, um, uh, and that's a compliment in there to you, Tim, as you enjoy your lunch.
Thank you. Sorry, I taught from nine to twelve, it's lunchtime, sorry.
It's all good, but the thing is, just come here, you know, uh, the presentation was a hundred percent on point. You addressed concerns, every concern that was raised has been addressed, uh, and, um, you know, I think, you know, um, the, you know, is, if you're taking somebody's property or putting somebody's property or control somebody's property at risk, you know, and you're not paying them or negotiated pay or fee, you know, just to even put their name on the list, and then then they may perceive it as not good for them. Um, you may hear questions about, I'm sure somebody's going to bring up gentification once again, which is, you know, commonly stated anytime, uh, urban development is placed on the table. Um, of course, wherever they live, uh, if you go back fifty or a hundred years, isn't like it was when they first, you know, before they moved there either, so they don't seem to have, uh, that reverse or forward vision of, you know, nothing stays the same, pretty much. Uh, except for parkland usually. Uh, but anyway, the presentation was on point, greatly appreciated, have no quorum to make a recommendation. Um, but, uh, I mean, personally, I'm, I'm in favor of it, and in a even, um, I think the, the tweaks um, make the plan even better, um, because you shortened the time and expanded the time. You, uh, you're addressing the main goals, which was those vacant lots. And anybody who owns property and has owned it for a significant amount of time and hasn't made any investment, why should we give any thought or hope that they're going to do something in the immediate future that would benefit their surrounding community? So.
I appreciate that, councillor. Um, and if I might, if I might indulge, I, I, for, I don't remember on the agenda. Amanda, did, did we put on the, uh, Bruce Landon Way?
We did.
So just very quickly, uh, councillors, I, I just wanted Tom Moore to talk. We, I think you guys are up to speed about our intent to, to do uh, more, uh, activation of Bruce Landon Way, uh, as it relates to, um, the Convention Center, um, and that it become more like a Yawkey Way type of, uh, uh, passageway. And, um, there's now some, some definition around that with regards to a potential easement that might be coming through, uh, that would ultimately go to the council for approval. And if Tom could, if you could just walk through kind of that structure, at least the preliminary structure that we have, so that the councillors that are in attendance can have an understanding of that.
Sure, uh, just like, uh, Director Sheehan said, we've been working in coordination with the Massachusetts Convention Center Authority towards identifying the section of Bruce Landon Way that would be acting as, um, sort of a mini Yawkey Way like they have outside of Family Park. Um, and the concept would be really that it's like an expansion of the footprint of the Convention Center itself during certain event days, uh, where the street would be, um, you know, partially closed off. Um, and you'd have, uh, you know, an, an activated street, uh, encompassing, you know, the area, you know, just out in front of the Mass Mutual Center, and then, you know, across Landon Way, and then into the, um, the parcel that, that, uh, is on the other side of Landon Way, uh, where there's currently a surface parking lot. So, uh, the kind of development concept is really to, to incorporate all of these, um, you know, uh, immediate areas around the, uh, Mass Mutual Center into usable space, uh, attractive space to bring people downtown to events. Um, and, you know, the easement vehicle is right now kind of the, the instrument that we're contemplating moving forward with. to establish exactly what the rights would be for MCC to use that space. And we definitely anticipate having more to tell, you know, the council and to to kind of present a full, you know, plan and design for what what is going to be taking place there. Once we have enough of those details from our kind of partners at MCC, but this is sort of a preliminary snapshot, just to kind of give everybody an idea that this is definitely something coming down the pipe. And we're kind of excited to be presenting it over the next month or two.
I've heard somebody say they need to be able to get put there, get their liquor license, and you guys need to hurry up and get this done. So I'll leave it with them. So you you probably got a handle what I'm talking about. But anyway, thank you, Tom, as as usual. Any other questions, comments for the people in attendance? All of you, thank you for an outstanding job and your service to the city of Springfield. And and thank you for allowing me to ramble a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Everybody be well.
Yeah, bye now.